Work on the pride, get it done, cause we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, double hit snooze, it's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock, come on, tick tock, tick. Let's go, tick tock, tick, come on, tick tock, tick. You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going, don't make delays. So bring me along and lift your arm high like Georgia, we'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with a step, you'll get in it in a second. Be winning like you never did it when you overslept, so right this minute, get right with it. What time is it? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty-five. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Mr. Gregory Stanley, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Carol Clark. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning, Counsel. With all his bow. Father, we come to you humbly as we know how. Lord, today we pray for the good of this city, that Lord you would touch this council, and Lord you would touch our mayor and staff. And God, now give us the ability to listen and hear your voice and do what you've asked us to do. And God, today we ask, oh God, that your glory be revealed in this place and that your hand be upon every member of this council. And Lord, now we ask, that Lord, let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, my strength and my redeemer. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Can we please have a roll call?
Counselor Member Abbott. Counselor Member Clark. Counselor Member Moore. Counselor Member Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Member Tate. Morning, Counselor Member Williams. Counselor Member Woods. Morning. Counselor President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning, Senator.
Counselor President O'Quinn.
All right, good morning. Counsel, the minutes are not ready for the January seventh, twenty twenty-five through April first, twenty twenty-five meetings. This time, we'll have communications from the mayor's office.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Madam Pro Tim. Good morning to the members of the council, to the members of the public, to all those under the sound of my voice. It's my privilege to bring you this morning's mayor's report. First up, there's an upcoming housing expo. The Birmingham Land Bank is presenting its Building Birmingham Accelerate Your Dream to Home Ownership Housing Expo. It's actually today, April the eighth, from twelve to two P M. at the Birmingham Museum of Art. Attendees will learn how to acquire new construction homes and explore opportunities with partners such as the Department of Community Development, Habitat for Humanity, Navigate, Tittysville Development Corporation, and more. For more information, please go to birminghamlandbank.org. This Saturday, the city of Birmingham and Growth Homes are hosting Neighbor Fest. It's a free festival celebrating community connections and homeownership on, again, this Saturday, April the twelfth, from ten A M. to two P M. at Lynn Park. The event will feature live entertainment, family-friendly activities, and resources to help residents explore pathways to homeownership. Experts will be available to answer questions and provide on-the-spot pre-qualification. For more info, please go to www dot growth slash home dash homes dot com forward slash neighbor fest. I'll say it again, I know it's a lot, www dot growth dash homes dot com forward slash neighbor fest. Mr. President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, members of the public. The city of Birmingham will also host its Spring Festival on this Sunday. Lots going on this weekend, April the thirteenth, at Railroad Park from one to four P M. There will be food trucks, music, face painting, Easter eggs, and a visit from the Easter Bunny. This event is free and it's open to the public. Mayor would like all of our citizens and guests to our city to please come out and enjoy. At this time, Mr. President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, we have a presentation. I'd like to ask Dr. Nathaniel Brooks, Program Manager of Community Relations in the Office of Community Outreach and Engagement in U A B.'s O'Neill Comprehensive Cancer Center, and any guests that are with him to please come forward to receive, to provide an update on Regional Wellness Day. Dr. Brooks is here to tell us about this important community-wide wellness event that's going to be taking place on April the seventeenth. Dr. Brooks.
Good morning, council members. The University of Alabama O'Neill Comprehensive Cancer Center is partnering with the city of Birmingham to host our Regional Wellness Day on April seventeen, which is next week. I want to thank foremost the mayor for being our inaugural chair and also doing a P S A for us this week. This year, Dr. Bobby Knight is our chair, and she will be joining us along with some of our other sponsors. Community members will have access to screening for common health concerns such as glucose levels, blood pressure, as well as cancer screening for age-allegable individuals. Screenings include biometric screening, blood sugar, blood pressure, cholesterol, weight, clinical breast exams, P S A tests, fall risk assessments, vision screenings, mental health screenings, and H I V. tests. In honor of Minority Health Month, we present the Regional Wellness Day that will be at the Birmingham Crossplex. Each one of you should have received this on last year, on last week. We did pass these out last week, as well as we have posted on social media websites. Last year, we had three hundred people in attendance, and we're looking for more people to come out. So invite each one of your districts to come out to the Birmingham Crossplex.
All right. Thank you all, and looking forward to a dynamic event. At this time, Mr. President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, I'd like to ask one of the best library directors in the nation, and on this side of heaven, Ms. Janine Langston. If she could, please make her way to the podium, as well as any guests that may be joining her. As we all know, libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community. Libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions no matter where they are on life's journey. At this time, we would like to pay tribute to our local libraries, librarians, and library workers with a special proclamation that I will read in part. Whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institution in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining, library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby proclaim April the seventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Library Week in the city of Birmingham, Alabama. We recognize the dedicated service of Birmingham Public Libraries in transformation, transforming lives and communities through education and lifelong learning. We encourage all of our residents to visit the Birmingham Public Library this week and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. I'll pass the podium to Director Langston. Ms. Janine.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Thank you, Chief Sparks. Good morning, President O'Quinn, Pro Tim Alexander, counselors and guests. Good morning, and thank you so much for recognizing National Library Week and the Birmingham Public Library. Today is also a special day because it is National Library Workers' Day, and I want to recognize and celebrate the phenomenal B P L. team. Some of them have joined me today, along with one of our board members, Mrs. Yolanda Hardy. So we thank you for her service as well. The Birmingham Public Library has been serving the city of Birmingham for over one hundred and thirty-nine years, and we take pride in our ability to adapt to the ever-changing needs of our community by continually expanding our collections, our services, and our partnerships. Along with Mayor Woodfin, I encourage everyone to visit our Birmingham Public Library today, this week, online, virtually, through our physical doors. Please join us. And I would also like to remind everyone that B P L., along with our Friends Foundation, will be hosting the Fourth Annual a Novel Tasting on Thursday, April the seventeenth, from six to eight thirty P M. at the Central Library. Tickets are still available, and you may be, you may purchase them by visiting our website at c o B P L. dot org or Eventbrite. And proceeds from that event will sponsor programs at all of our B P L. locations. We are honored to be here today, and so thank you for this opportunity. Thank you. Thank you.
Pro Tim Alexander.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Director Langston and your staff for coming and just reminding us of the tremendous role that libraries make to our community. I say this every year, I don't know where I'd be if it not been for a library near me. And you just open the world. You are just such a resource, and it's just always great when you could go to the library and they could direct you and point you to where you need to be. I'm just so excited to, again, to just reflect on what you do for the citizens of Birmingham through your work. My first meeting this month for District Seven neighborhoods was at the Poudley Branch Library. So I'm always excited to be there and to have an opportunity to just go into the library, the smell of the books and just the feeling that you just have. And for the board member, I'm just very excited for what you all are doing for the libraries. I know the novel tasting, this is something that has come about as a fundraiser, and so I thank you all for your vision and for your willingness to just bring resources to the library. So thank you again. Thank you. Thank you.
I got a question for you. I can't think of a better way to celebrate Library Month than to open a library. Well, how are we doing on Eastlake?
We're moving forward. We have a few more things to do with some H V A. C. issues. They're about finished. We're meeting later this week to discuss the timeline, so hopefully within, I would say, within the month. You'll hear some information.
Thanks. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you, and, you know, our libraries aren't just libraries. They're centers, you know, gathering places in neighborhoods. They're also cultural institutions and safe havens for our children, and you all do a phenomenal job. And I know we don't resource you enough, but you make a lot happen with what you get, and we're really pleased with what you all do. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
One more presentation, Mr. President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council. At this time, I would like to ask Birmingham's poet laureate, Salem Green, as well as any of her guests, to please join me at the podium as well. Poetry is one of the most treasured forms of artistic expression, capturing the richness and diversity of human experience through language, rhythm, and imagination. Our poet laureate Salem Green has done a fantastic job sharing her gift, as well as celebrating the gift of others through the power of poetry all across our city and state. We want to thank her and all of our Birmingham poets for telling our stories through artistic expression. In honor of April being National Poetry Month, we want to take the time to celebrate poetry with a special proclamation that I will read in part. Whereas, the city of Birmingham is home to a vibrant and growing community of poets, spoken word artists, educators, and literary organizations whose work strengthens our cultural fabric and uplifts the voices of our diverse residents. And whereas, celebrating National Poetry Month in Birmingham encourages residents to engage with poetry through readings, performances, workshops, and educational initiatives across schools, libraries, community centers, and public spaces. And whereas, the city of Birmingham values the arts of a, as a vital component of civic life and proudly supports artistic expression that reflects and inspires our community. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Poetry Month in the city of Birmingham, and encourage all residents to celebrate the power and beauty of poetry, support local poets and arts organizations, and participate in events and programs that honor the written and spoken word. And now we'll have Ms. Salem, would you like to come up and share a few words to the council and to the public?
Thank you. Thank you to the mayor, to the council, and to all administration. I'm Salem Green, the poet laureate of the city of Birmingham, and Sonia Sanchez, who is a poet from this great city as well, states, "Poetry is like water. Poetry is life. Poetry is earth. It's the sound. It's music. It's the language of millions of us to stay alive." National Poetry Month was established in nineteen ninety-six by the Academy of American Poets. It takes place in April and is the largest literary celebration in the world. Therefore, it brings me great joy as the first poet laureate here in the city of Birmingham to celebrate National Poetry Month with the city of Birmingham and to have this recognition. I'm also excited to say that the Magic City Poetry Festival, which is run by Executive Director Ashley Jones, who is our state poet laureate, has put on several beautiful poetry workshops and events during April. And on April twenty-ninth, at five thirty at the library, where else, Central Library Downtown, we will be having a Year in Verse, where I will be talking about my first inaugural year, as well as my birthday, because that's my birthday, so I need y'all to come. Where we'll be celebrating poetry in Birmingham, but also celebrating the first year and some of the wonderful work that we've done with other poets, including Senovium, who's here, who's one of our poet fellows, and Create Birmingham, who is our beautiful, beautiful poet laureate sponsor. So I'm really excited to say that poetry has taken its place here in Birmingham, and poets are here to stay. Poetry is how we hope. Poetry preserves us all. Poetry is the liberation of a nation. Poetry is the story of human and belonging, and Birmingham is where the world comes to belong. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Salem, it's always good to see you, and congratulations on your year.
Thank you.
And keep striving, because I met you, what, about six years ago?
Yes.
Yes, and that liberation, revolutionary, and restorative healing spirit that you have is what Birmingham needs. And Ms. Senovia and Create Birmingham for having the vision to, you know, to lift up those who express themselves in this way. So glad to have you continuing doing this work and raising up young people and artists and those who want to keep, you know, spreading the greatness of poetry. Thank you, Salem.
Thank you so much, Counselor Tate. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the items be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clerk, could we please through, read through the items on our consent agenda?
Consent agenda starts on page two with item one. Skip over to page eight, we have items three and four on consent. Page nine, we have items five, seven, and eight on consent. Please note that item six should be withdrawn. And on item seven, in the actual resolution, as well as the agreement, we should change at the end of the resolution itself, that has Birmingham City Schools, it should say Holy Family Catholic Academy. That's on the second line from the bottom in the actual resolution. And the same should be for the contractors for making that change. And on item number eight, the amount of twenty thousand dollars should change to thirty thousand dollars. That's on the third line from the bottom on page nine. And then over on page ten, we're just going to list the G L. account numbers for the twenty thousand dollars coming from District One, zero, 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 one, underscore, zero, 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 underscore, zero, four, two, six, one, point, five, four, two, point, zero, zero, one. And we have ten thousand dollars coming from District Six. Should be zero, zero, one, underscore, zero, 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 underscore, zero, four, two, six, one, point, five, four, two, point, zero, zero, one. And pick back up with the consent agenda on page ten, with items nine, ten, and eleven. And we have several changes on items nine and ten. So on item nine, I have the typo on the third line, this should be blocked at the end of that sentence on the third line from the top. That should be blocked. And starting with seven thousand dollars should change to seven thousand five hundred dollars. And the two thousand dollars should change to two thousand and five hundred dollars. That's on item number nine. And item number ten, one, two, three, fourth line from the top, the twenty-five hundred dollars should change to five thousand and five hundred dollars. And at the bottom, the discretionary amount for, I guess that's District Six, should be thirty-five hundred dollars. It's three thousand and five hundred dollars. And we pick back up with the consent agenda on page eleven, with items twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. And page twelve, we have items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen on consent. Page thirteen, we have items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one on consent. Page fourteen, we have items twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five on consent. Please note the typo for item twenty-four, the G L. account number at the second line from the bottom should be zero, zero, one, underscore, zero, one, zero, underscore. I had to ship, that should be zero, four, two, zero, zero, point, five, two, seven, dash, zero, four, eight. Consent agenda continues on page fifteen with items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And we close out on page sixteen with items thirty and thirty-one.
Thank you. Do any members of the council wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Pro Tim Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove item number four on page eight from consent.
Okay. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove item seven from consent.
Seven. On page nine. Okay. Others, Counselor Abbott.
On page thirteen, I would like to remove item nineteen.
Do you have any additional items, Counselor Abbott?
No, that's.
Okay. All right. We have one public hearing item that's marked consent, that's item number one. Do any members of the public wish to remove item number one from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we are ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
All right, Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
I got you. Counselor, cousin, Pro Tim Alexander.
Yes.
Second was by.
Smithman.
Smithman, thank you. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. The consent agenda is approved. Item number two, please.
Item two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute for, and is the act of said city, an amendment to the agreement between the city of Birmingham and Oak Hill Memorial Association. Date is September the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and approved by ordinance number twenty-four, that's sixty-five, to provide an additional, I'm sorry, to provide an additional amount of sixty thousand dollars to assist with the Pioneer Chapel Restoration Project, which is essential in keeping the ninety-seven-year-old historic building in good condition and mitigate the potential for irreparable damage from moisture and neglect, increasing the funding on the agreement for the F Y. two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five term only, for an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This is an item of permanent operation that I need you to see to pass today.
Move for you, C.
Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark. Counselor Member Smithman.
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate. Counselor Member Woods. Counselor President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor President O'Quinn.
Aye.
All right, motion on the item, please.
I move approval.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right. Any discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Item number two is approved. Item number four, please.
Two, item four. Item four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute, deliver an agreement between the city of Birmingham and Alabama Power Company, and an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for a term of up to three years under which APC provide power and house small cell equipment on select poles for training for, training for unique aerial crossing, prediction, solution, sound sensors to identify when a train crossing is blocked and alert the public ahead of the time through dynamic messaging boards, software, and remote installation for the Birmingham Department of Transportation, which is predicted to significantly reduce traffic congestion surrounding rail crossings, vehicle interactions with active crossing, and first responder delays at crossings. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Item is before you.
All right. Pro Tim Alexander.
Thank you very much. The reason that I asked for this item, I'm very much in agreement with this item. I just wanted to be sure that the public was aware of the collaboration that has taken place to bring this second safety process to some of our railroad tracks in the western area of Birmingham. The train fold, this system will be in play, put in place through opera dollars that were collaboratively allocated by District Five and District Seven. So I want to thank you, President O'Quinn. I know we've collaborated on some other safety safeguards in those particular train tracks, and so I do appreciate your role as our Chair of Transportation and just someone that advocates for us. I also want to thank the Birmingham Department of Transportation for ensuring that we were able to secure these funds, because that does take additional dollars to, for the electric piece of this. And so, Dr. Quinn, I'm just going to let you, just as transportation, just be sure the public aware of what we're doing here.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think we're all really excited to see this new technology implemented in the city of Birmingham. This is something, you know, blocked railroad crossings, because the city of Birmingham is very much a railroad town. It's been an issue that folks have dealt with here for generations. And despite, you know, what folks may think, the. the, the city, nor the county, nor the state have the authority to regulate train movements. That was a Supreme Court decision, you know, that goes back a couple of decades. Because train movements are considered interstate commerce, it's prohibited by the, the Constitution for, you know, anybody but the federal government to regulate train movement. So, in any case, this is a, you know, novel solution where these devices actually listen for the trains coming. And it'll be at four crossings in the area between District Seven and District Six. And will, uh, you know, detect when the trains are coming, make a prediction about how long they're going to be there, and communicate that information to people in the surrounding area through dynamic messaging signage. And also, it'll be able to connect and feed that information to navigational apps. So if you're in the western area, it's, it's, it's a good idea, if you haven't ever done it before, to download Google Maps or Waze or any of those others and get familiar with using that, because that's going to help you, save you some headaches with, and be able to route you around some of these blocked train crossings. You don't have to have that, you know, again, there, there'll actually be signage in designated areas around these crossings. But, you know, it's one of those things. If you get to the blocked railroad crossing, you know, and you miss the sign, you're like, ah, I should have had my Waze app open. Often happens to me, you know, like, I can see the traffic jam ahead and I'm like, ah, I could have gotten off at the, the previous exit had I had the navigation app on. So, in any case, this is a really cool project. This will be one of the first cities in the state of Alabama to start utilizing this type of technology. And it's, it's actually, the full course of the project will actually be five years. So we've got a long runway to, you know, collect data and, and determine how effective it is. And hopefully, and I feel confident that it will work out well and that we'll be able to see this implemented elsewhere in, in the city of Birmingham because we have hundreds of rail crossings. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wondering, does it also communicate with emergency dispatch?
Yeah, so, actually, as part of this proj, um, this actual item that was before us, the, one of the recommendations that we got was that we also have cameras on these devices so that those can be connected to the real-time crime center. And, and so, Real-Time Crime Center will be able to also visually see when the crossings are blocked and dispatch can route, you know, emergency first responders around those blockages. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no comments. I just wanted to congratulate the both of you all for your hard work and the collective effort that it took to get this done and the tenacity that it took to get this done. And, and you all have given people the history lesson of, you know, the interstate contact, even when it comes to, you know, big trucks. People think that we can regulate trucks from going in their neighborhood and that's a federal transportation rule. But congratulations on the hard work and the dedication. I know, since I've been here, I heard you guys talk about trains blocking. So excited for, um, the west side. And so, you know, we got train tracks on the north side. So congratulations, colleagues. This is what collective movement and working together looks like. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, I want to thank you, Dr. Quinn, I believe Counselor Smithman.
Yes, I want to echo what Counselor Tate has said because I know Matt Pro Tem has talked about the three of us have been a group text about it. But, you know, I really want to commend our council leadership and on being proactive on it. I think as soon as you all heard about it, you all have tried every avenue to make sure this has improved. And to me, I think it has improved a lot and to educate people. Because a lot of times we resolve issues and we're so focused on that, that, you know, a lot of times I think politicians forget to educate the people as well. So I'm excited about this. If you guys have, like, maybe a little brochure, I think if we put in the schools too to tell the kids that they're riding with their parents, that'd be good. But kudos to you all, I, I really appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's it for me, thank you.
Um, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Item four is approved. Item seven, please.
Item six is withdrawn. And go to item seven. Item seven, a resolution pursuant to section eleven dash four dash one and three, thirty-eight dash two dash nine, code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with Holy Family Catholic Academy in an amount not to exceed seven thousand, five hundred dollars to allow Holy Family Catholic Academy to provide, there's going to be some language change here, it should be in the resolution too. Okay, synopsis should strike. Healthy food, fruits, and vegetables, and add additional education and enrichment opportunities. That's add additional education and enrichment opportunities at below-market rate discounts to poor, needy, and elderly citizens of Birmingham. And by delivering, you know, strike the produce. So end it, citizens of Birmingham. And on the actual resolution itself, we make the changes from, um, one, two, three, starting at the third line from the bottom on the actual resolution itself. We're going to add additional education and enrichment opportunities and strike healthy food options, fruits, and vegetables. And then we'll pick back up with four, poor and needy students, and strike Birmingham City Schools and add Holy Family Catholic Academy. And end with the rest of the resolution, it says said funds to come from District Eight discretionary funds. Anything else? You don't have to, if everyone agrees with it, you're good. You know what I'm saying, you have a motion on the table. If they're in agreement with the amendment, we're fine.
Right. Yeah, so Counselor Clark has moved the item, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Counselor Clark?
No, thank you. I just wanted to get the language straight.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready for the vote. All right. Item seven is approved. Item nineteen.
I move approval.
Any discussion, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I asked that this be pulled because I wanted to know what it is. Is this crash data for accidents that occur in our city? And is there only one? And, or is this for our own accidents that we have, trying to figure out why we have so many? Does anyone know?
Chief?
Yeah, um, this is for BPD. When they get on the scene of a crash accident, they're able to pull the data from the, the cars that are in the accidents to do their accident reports. These are just additional things that they need in order to do the police reports when we have accidents on our streets.
Okay, so there's just one unit in the whole police department? Or how does this work?
What's before the council is the abilities to order as many as they need. This is just a resolution to approve.
Oh, okay. I just wondered. I like to know what I'm approving. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
That was all.
Okay, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item nineteen is approved.
All right.
That brings us to item thirty-two.
Item thirty-two, a resolution setting a public hearing made the sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, to consider the adoption, but proposed text amendment to the city's zoning ordinance. Ordinance number fifteen dash one thirty-three, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-five dash three.
Motion on the item?
I move approval.
Second.
All right. Ready for the vote?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item thirty-two is approved. All right, now for our announcements. Counselor Clark?
District Eight announcements. Well, let me just start by recognizing and saying hello to Andy Bell, who likes to come visit the city council. He's new on the team at Renew Birmingham and they're doing great work to revitalize people and place in Ensley, in the Ensley area and some other neighborhoods as well. Neighborhood meetings in District Eight. We've got the Bellevue Heights Neighborhood Meeting today at six-thirty PM at Brown Elementary School. And also Central Park Neighborhood will meet this week, Thursday at the Five Points West Regional Library at six PM. It was already mentioned that the Birmingham Land Bank is hosting its Housing Expo today. We can all just leave here and go right over to the museum and cheer them on as they present a program called Accelerate Your Dream to Homeownership. And that's from noon to two at the Steiner Auditorium at the Birmingham Museum of Art. Also, Neighbor Fest was also mentioned. And, you know, it's, it's running in tandem with National Realtist Week. So there's lots of activities around town that realtors are hosting. And there will be several classes going on in tandem with Neighbor Fest at a venue nearby. So lots of things going on to really prepare for this home buying season, this spring and summer home buying season. Girl's Spring, a two thousand and twenty-five City of Birmingham Community Arts Grant recipient in partnership with C. Jane Wright LLC, will host an inspiring evening of poetry as the finalist of the Be Empowered Poetry Contest. Take the stage, experience a powerful, experience powerful words, celebrate creativity, and see who's selected as one of Birmingham's top teen poets. This event takes place Thursday, April twenty-fourth, at six PM at Art Play. That's at UAB, and it's free and open to the public. Also, just picking up and reinforcing the message that our poet laureate gave us about a year in verse celebrating Salam Green's inaugural year as Birmingham's poet laureate. That event, if you missed noting it earlier, is Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Birmingham Public Library's central location. The evening will include a conversation with Salam about her latest book, The Other Revival, exciting updates on the two thousand and twenty-five poet laureate programs, and a special birthday celebration for Salam, complete with cake. And the event is free and open to the public. And I invite you to join me for a brisk walk around the crossplex. We meet at eight AM at the Starbucks on Wednesday mornings. And, you know, it doesn't take long and we have some good conversations. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next planning and zoning committees that would have been scheduled for April ninth at three-thirty here in the council chambers has been canceled due to lack of cases. We have one vacancy on the Design Review Committee for a building trade practitioner. The deadline to turn in your resume and letter of interest is April seventeenth. And those should be sent to valerie dot abbott at birminghamal dot gov. Neighborhood Association Meetings, we have two meetings tonight, both at the same time. Six o'clock, Forest Park, South Avondale. I don't think that's right. I think tonight's Highland Park, so let me check on that. If you have concerns or issues, we still want people to call three-one-one or download the app. The My BM three-one-one app on your phone so that you can take photographs and make it easier for our folks to find the item that you're complaining about. And last, we ask residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for all the extra information that's available there that we don't have time to tell you about in these three minutes that we're allocated. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counselor Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. As far as neighborhood meetings tonight, we will have South Tussfield at five-thirty at Holy Family Crystal Ray High School and then Arlington West End at six PM at West End Library. And then West End Manor will meet on Monday, April fourteenth, at five PM at New Hope Baptist Church. Also, on April fourteenth, at three-thirty PM here in the council chambers, we will have our next Budget and Finance Meeting. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Also, the Michael Wilson Easter Egg Hunt will be held this Saturday, sorry, Saturday, April nineteenth, at the Fred Pomp Athletic Field, also known as Lowry Park, located at fifteen-twenty-five Memm's Avenue Southwest, three-five-two-on-one. There will be food, games, and music, RSVPs to Valerie Clark. Also, Saint Paul Lutheran Church will have its marker dedication ceremony this Sunday during their eleven AM service, and it is free to the public. And then lastly, I would like to thank House Proud Atlanta Baptist Health, Mason City Residents, Omega Psi Phi, Kappa League, AKA, AKA D, and all the volunteers who came out to support giving back to the community. We had almost three hundred volunteers, which was amazing. And it was amazing because there was a lot of young people and see how eager they were to help the community. Really warmed my heart in talking to the homeowners and how they appreciated because you help with HVAC systems, bathrooms, painting, replacing roofs, landscape. I really want to thank Counselor Tate because I know she is the one who brought this to the council. And I really, really appreciate her for this. This was such a great project, really latched on to, so kudos to you. Because I know you had your first one in November and then I know Mr. President has his this weekend as well. So I think that's what it's all about, is helping people, you know, especially senior citizens, because a lot of them can't afford it right now, so. And I don't know if you guys saw a picture of me on a ladder painting. I was actually on there for a little bit, if you know me, I'm scared of falling. But I think Aaron, I don't know where Aaron is, he really saved me because the wind started blowing so hard, y'all. I said, I'm too hot for this, but it was really nice. And our youngest volunteer is probably like five or six, and he was just so cute, so. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all my announcements.
All right, thank you. Pro Tem Alexander?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. These are our announcements for District Seven. I do want to say, Counselor Smithman, I passed by Mason City and I saw all those people. I almost did a U-turn, said, what, what you doing up there? But I was just so excited to see all the volunteers you had. And then after seeing the, seeing it on Facebook and just seeing the numbers. So thank you again also to Counselor Tate and for this particular effort. And we just see how when people roll up their sleeves and work together, we can make changes in our community. Here are neighborhood meetings that are coming up for this week. Today, we have the Riley Neighborhood Association meets at six PM at Noble Chapel CME Church. And the East and West Brownsville Neighborhoods, they have combined meetings today at five-thirty via conference call. On Thursday, April tenth, the Roosevelt City Neighborhood Association will meet at five-thirty at the Roosevelt Rec Center. For those residents, please keep in mind, this is a time change. We're trying something different. And Roosevelt, we're trying to see if we have it later in the evening with that increased participation. So Roosevelt City, let's come on and show up and show out there. On Monday, April fourteenth, I have listed the West Goldwire Neighborhood will meet five PM via conference call, as well as the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood will meet at six PM. They meet in person at the Ox Valley Rec Center. Both of those meetings are typically every other month. So just please be sure to check with your neighborhood president to be sure those are still on the books. We had the recognition of National Library Week, National Librarians. Just want to let everyone know that the Powderly Branch Library on Wednesday, April sixteenth- Just want to let everyone know that the Powderly Branch Library on Wednesday, April sixteenth, and Wednesday, April thirtieth, they will be offering a Good Moving with Chair Fitness Program by Phyllis Fisher. And she's a certified instructor. She's going to, all those that come out, you'll exercise your mind and body. You don't have to bring a chair. We have plenty of those there in the library. Just bring a towel and good heart and spirit. So again, this will help us with our flexibility, strength, circulation, and energy levels. She, she says she's not going to overwork us, but she's just going to give us a good workout, okay? They've challenged me, I gotta do it, so I'm gonna do it. And so anyway, I'll join those members there. So please come on out. You don't have to be a member of that neighborhood association. This is open for the, everyone in D. Seven, that's the Powderly Branch Library. And last, I just want to remind everyone, we have Love D. Seven Day that's coming up on Saturday, April twenty-sixth. I'm going to be trying to outdo all these ladies and have a good number of volunteers. So we just want to be sure, I've always said, if you take your neighbor to the left, your neighbor to the right, and you all clean up, then you've got one block, it can extend to a street, it can extend to an entire neighborhood, and hopefully the district. So that's Love D. Seven Day, April twenty-sixth. We'll be starting out at nine A M. at Jones Valley Middle School, and then we'll be come back at the end for some fun games. And also, we'll have the U A B. Mobile Market, we'll have shredder trucks. This is a great, we hopeful, service to the community event. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tate.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, the shredder truck, but I've got to check on the electronic recycling, but I'll let you know because you were there last year. So we'll be sure to get that out there. Thank you.
Alright, yes, Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo Councilor Smithman because during our cleanup, Cody called Kim and said it was like three hundred people out here. But congratulations on the great impact that was made in District Six. You know, restoring and facade improvement, Home Depot, and I can only imagine, you know, what those families felt like, because I was, you know, in Wilding, we started in Wilding with eight. And so we're going to be spreading, the next portion, we'll be moving to Sherman Heights and Dolomite, again, you know, spreading out. But I'm very grateful to Lisa, because Lisa's from Dolomite. She's from Birmingham, but the beautiful work that House Pride does is, you know, far in between. So congratulations, my colleague, my sister, on your, your day. And I know that President Oakland has his coming up, so I do have somebody that's possibly want to volunteer. So I will let you know as well. So these are the announcements for District Nine, the North Pratt Neighborhood Meeting. It's tonight at five P M. at Pratt City Library, located at five oh nine Dugan Avenue. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six P M. at the Jimmy Hudson Rec Center, and it's located at two thirty-seven Pratt Highway. Oak Ridge Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday, April the tenth at four P M. They meet on conference call. You can dial in at nine five two two oh six. Four nine one eight passcode is two two three four one eight. Hooper City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight on, I mean, I'm sorry, on Thursday, April the tenth at six P M. at Hooper City Rec Center. The address is thirty-nine oh one Fourth Street West. North Birmingham Neighborhood Association will be, will be held on Monday, April the fourteenth at six P M. at the North Birmingham Library, located at twenty-five oh one Thirty-first Avenue North. Next public safety meeting will be held.
We're having a fire alarm, so we will suspend our action. We reconvene into the call of the chair.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Potem Alexander. Council President O'Quinn.
President. Council Tate, did you?
Yes, sir.
Have more announcements?
Well, I'm gonna pick up the next Public Safety meeting will be held today at one P M here in the council chamber. If you have any questions or concern, feel free to contact our office at two five four twenty three oh two twenty ninety six. The Salvation Army C D L graduation is going to be on Friday, April eleventh, at the Salvation Army Command Center. That's located at twenty fifteen twenty sixth Avenue North. Birmingham three five two three four. This is a very robust program that they that they have been able to really keep going at the Salvation Army. So we will be presenting them with a fifty thousand dollar American Rescue Act plan dollars to further their workforce development. And so we gotta be busy. We can found heights farm. We'll be in found heights farm on Saturday at twelve noon. Located at thirteen twelve thirteen Street North, and I think you probably will be there also, Mr. President. But this is another opera project. Where we will be providing seventeen thousand dollars for this call. We all eat kickoff celebration to provide fresh food access for fifty District Nine families. So fifty families will be blessed with, you know, the growing hands of Ms. Dominique. And also it'd be a cooking demonstration by Kimberly McNair Brock of Biddy's Living Kitchen. So come on out if y'all not busy. Come on by the farm. I'm excited to be able to invest into food insecurity. We were out at Daniel Payne on Saturday where we presented a twenty five thousand dollar check. And that's to give families a food subscription for a year, just like HelloFresh. They'll have food that'll be delivered to their homes. And so let's talk about the Taste of Northside event. So if you guys are not busy. Sunday while we're going to railroad stop by off the shores park. So they're gonna have a taste of Northside event at off the shores and it's gonna be good. Council Clark sponsored that along with some others. A lot of different sponsors. So Illinois Spencer, the clutch band, Lion Dancing, Sherry Reeves. So if you're not busy, come on out to off the shores park on Saturday, Sunday is where. So that concludes my announcements, Mr. President, and it's back in your hands.
All right. Thank you. Potem, you had another?
Thank you. I do want to just amend one of the announcements for a neighborhood meeting. On Monday, April fourteenth, only the West Goldwire Neighborhood will meet five P M via conference call. The Otzmore Valley Neighborhood meets every other month, so they won't meet again until May. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Council Abbott?
I got my neighborhood meetings straightened out also. Tonight is Highland Park Neighborhood meeting at six o'clock at the Highland Park Racket Club Building on the second floor and also at the same time, six o'clock, the East Avondale Neighborhood Association meets via conference call. So thank you. Wanted to get that straightened out.
All right. Thank you. All right. This week in District Five, we have two neighborhood meetings. East Avondale will meet tonight via conference call at six P M. You can contact my office at two five four two six seven nine for information on how to join that call. The Smithfield Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday, April tenth at six P M at the Smithfield Court Community Nutrition Center. The Transportation Committee will meet on Monday, April fourteenth at two P M here in the council chambers. You can submit agenda items by contacting Kimberly Phillips at Kimberly dot Phillips at Birmingham A L dot gov. As was mentioned earlier, we're District Five is going to be having its House Proud Day this Saturday. If you would like to volunteer, please join us for a District Five Day of Service in the Smithfield Neighborhood in partnership with House Proud from eight thirty to one thirty P M. Please contact our office at two five four two six seven nine if you or your organization would like to volunteer or for additional information. The Jones Valley Teaching Farm will host its annual celebration of community food and education on Friday, April eleventh from four thirty to six thirty P M at the Center for Food Education. There will be open house with activities for children and adults, cooking demonstrations and farm tours. The Downtown Farm Food Stand will also be open for the spring and summer season. For additional information, please visit W W W J V T F dot org. The Crestwood Community will be having their Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April nineteenth, starting at ten A M at Crestwood Park. The Birmingham Birmingham's official Celebrate Trails Day will take place Saturday, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty five at seven A M until noon during the Market at Pepper Place. Enjoy fun and free day outside while participating in a range of activities hosted by the Rails to Trails Conservancy. The Market at Pepper Place, Freshwater Land Trust and Redemptive Cycles. And want to remind folks that we still need lifeguards for the Birmingham Park and Recreation Summer Pool Program. If you're interested, please contact Carrie Sewell at two oh five two five four two one eight nine. Also want to remind folks that the Alabama State Games will kick off on Friday, June thirteenth at Legacy Arena at the B J C C. This is the forty second annual opening ceremony. Thousands of athletes from around the state will participate in this event. It's free and open to the public. And for more information, to visit W W W dot A L A games dot com. And then finally, we are really looking forward to the World Police and Fire Games that will be starting June twenty seventh and run through July sixth. Those events are also free and open to the public. But we need some volunteers. So for additional information on that, please visit W W W dot B H M twenty twenty five dot com. All right, Mr. Clerk, we are ready for our public speakers.
Our speaker is Willie Jenkins.
Good morning, Mr. Jenkins.
Willie Jenkins, eleven oh five Starwood Drive. I like to say last week, you know, from morning, y'all, council, y'all voted for the letter for this. Y'all remember, you know. Just wanna let y'all know. And then I just wanna let y'all know that Men of Prayer, we still kicking off. We gonna have be at Mount Zion Baptist Church on Finland. We'll be there on the post sign on the point seven. And then Old Street Baptist Church, my church in Cotterville. June eighth, that'll be at eleven and three o'clock. And Evergreen will be at Mount at Evergreen Baptist Church at eleven o'clock. But I would like to invite y'all, y'all got a letter where all is gonna be seen it. And I would like to invite all y'all to come and pray for my, we lost one of our schoolmate with Carver High School, straight away from Carver. Angela Joyce Moore. She went to Carver High School and she was a nice person, been knowing her all my life. But the Lord called her in. And also, you know, like I said, Walter Bennett, y'all know Walter, you know, some of y'all know Walter Bennett. He been around a long time. He been singing with the Men of Prayer for a long time, but the Lord called him in. And I'd like to say, you know, that pray for my family. We lost one of my lady named Beverly, Mo Beverly Milton. But I just want y'all to pray for her, one of my relative companions, just pray for her. This right here, I got a picture of this. Y'all probably don't know, but she did have the series, but y'all pray for one of my sister, sister-in-law. And that's all I like to say, you know, let's say, you know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
All right.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna say this in my best Jamaican Alabian voice. I want to say get ready for the Bob Marley One Love Caribbean Festival. We are inviting everyone to join us here in Birmingham. Now, I don't know if you've been to Jamaica, but I love Jamaica. So we're bringing Jamaica to Birmingham once again. And it's gonna be June the twentieth and the twenty first. The twentieth will be a Caribbean spiritual will be at more than, no, it'll be at Cathedral of the Cross in Center Point. And then on the twenty first, we'll be here at Lynn Park and on Twentieth Street, and we're gonna have a night of culture. You're gonna enjoy some jerk chicken, some peas, amen, all kinds of Caribbean dishes. And we're just gonna soak up all of the vibes, all of the sound, the music. Just be able, if you can't get to Jamaica this year, you get to enjoy here like a staycation, okay? All right. So here is Mr. Sherman Sterling. He is the visionary. He's been doing this for about twenty six years. I just got appointed yesterday. So anyway, but I've met him and he's a wonderful soul and he's got a vision. So he's gonna tell you a little bit more about it.
One of my team represent Birmingham. She raised here. She started out on the street.
Mr. Sterling, please come to the mic so we can hear you.
Good morning. Excuse me. This is Birmingham's own. She's part of our team. I'm honored to have her speak for me. I spoke to all of the queens already and those who are not here, representative, mayor, he's not here, the gentleman, fire. We all went out in the midst of this, all kind of trials going on. But I still thank you all for whatever you all decide to help us with. We are going out to the world to represent Birmingham in all of the states of the country. We bringing the King of Ghana here on June twenty first. On the twentieth, he gonna rise at the airport here. We gonna make Birmingham the diversity city that people want to come for entertainment on an annual weekend. Jamaica is a one love foundation that we promoting with the state money. We like for you all to represent that your own city and your own cause. We have a website. We like to get whatever you all want us to have, acknowledging what the councils has done to Birmingham to twenty five and including cultural diversity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. What was the time for the Lynn Park event?
Over six P M to ten P M.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Mr. Williams. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning, absolute mayor, President O'Quinn, members of the council. I'm Charlie L. Williams, Junior, and I am the president and founder of High Five Birmingham. And High Five Birmingham is known for rolling out the red carpets and schools all across Birmingham and in some of the schools in some of the areas of Jefferson County. We're now recognizing three of twenty five of Alabama's most improved schools. They are Henry J. Oliver, Richard Arrington Elementary and Englewood K through eight. Unfortunately, the storm prevented us from going to Englewood on the thirty first. However, we had to roll Englewood back to the twenty twenty first. So we just finished up with Oliver on this next Monday, the fourteenth. We will be at Arrington Elementary School. Some of our guests who are slated to be there will be former mayor Rich Arrington, Junior, who was a special guest. Of course, chief, our new chief of police, Chief Michael Pickens, said he will be there. Of course, Sheriff Mark Pitway will be there. And of course, the lovely lady Cougar Cougars from Lost and State Community College. They are on this tour with us to celebrate our kids. And again, we would love to see you there because it does something for our kids who have put in the effort to academics, to put themselves on the map. And we need to be there to see our kids raise their hands and get a high five from you. And it's so touching, not only, I'm just gonna put a special emphasis on our special needs kids because many kids never see themselves as walking a red carpet. And to see you there to greet them, that would mean the world to many kids and parents. On April twenty sixth, which is a heavy day of activities, High Five Birmingham will be hosting its saddle up for autism, a day of connection, where horseback riding, moonwalks, sensory friendly zones, vendors and educational opportunities. moonwalks, sensory friendly zones, vendors, and educational opportunities. Um, we have, uh, again, the Sheriff Department, I C K and associate, High Five Birmingham, and the Birmingham City School Systems with us. And so right now, we're, uh, slated to be at Willowood Pa- Willowood Park. Uh, we will be emailing each and every one of you, um, this information. And, and again, and oh, let me back up just a little bit. On yesterday, let me say, um, for Oliver Elementary School, I wanna thank Chief Moon, Birmingham Fire Department, um, there were, um, some Birmingham P D officers there, uh, James Sullivan, Board of Education. So again, thank you, thank you. We look forward to seeing you on next Monday at Arrington Elementary School. Thank you.
Protem Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. What time at Arrington?
Uh, seven A M.
So you do it as they arrive for school?
Right, after they arrive at school. And it's only one hour.
Okay.
One hour only, and then we're gonna, and we have, um, age appropriate music, so there's song, dance, what have you. And we have a bullhorn for that individual who just wanna cheer our kids on. And the excitement is there. You will, you will be blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, um, that concludes our public speakers. Uh, want to thank our officers on duty. As also always, we have Officer Pinkert, who's based here in City Hall, and also Officer Square, who's based here in City Hall. Thank you for being with us. That brings us to our motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.
I'm Crystal Smithman. I serve on the Birmingham City Council. I'm doing this in partnership with House Proud Atlanta and First Baptist Church in Mason City. And I really wanna tell you all, it means so much to me that you guys are out here, especially early on a Saturday morning. Um, you guys really are going to bless the people of Mason City. And so we're out here in District Six, Mason City Neighborhood. It's been an amazing day so far. We are at one of five sites here, uh, really helping and blessing people during landscaping, painting, uh, just all the good things. So it's been so amazing because we're out here building communities and providing hope for our people.
Oh, God, the work we do to the house, I hate this real show.
And really today is just about neighbors helping neighbors. And it really shows you that the community is really helping each other, and we really have to, you know, uplift each other to really bring back the city the way that we want it to be. This is an amazing picture. We've had, uh, almost two hundred and sixty volunteers today, which is awesome. And, you know, just to realize that this is my community and this is how I can be proactive in it. I don't have to be a politician, or I don't have to be a lawyer or a doctor. I can just simply just help somebody in need. Uh, so House Proud, super, super thankful to Lisa and Lori specifically, um, the things that they do, the fact that they're coming from Atlanta and coming to the city, um, they're unfamiliar with to do this. And so really just helping to continue to promote generational wealth because the upkeep of a house is very important. Um, this is used in my ARPA funding, so making sure that we, uh, help people with home ownership because that's what helps to keep people in the city of Birmingham. So yeah, we're, we're gonna do more of these coming up this summer and stay tuned for it.
This is basically a culmination of back and forth and back and forth with Colton Industries, Method One, or the interior designers.
It's so great to see, uh, Bob Friedman's life's work come to fruition, you know, because he's worked on this for as long as I've known him. And at times, it just sounded like, I, I started to believe it was something that would never happen. So he's stuck with it and it is amazing. And having grown up in Birmingham, it just brings back so many memories of childhood of, uh, these radio personalities larger than life.
I, I love sharing the history. I think it's a grand history, and I love the reaction of the community in particular.
A lot of the entertainment was through the radio during those days. But, um, but they were also civic leaders because they helped us to, they helped to organize the community.
We end up, uh, being able to tell the story of the historic Civil Rights District, the Fourth Avenue Business District in particular.
Really great to be able to see this kind of tribute to that era and, and what it has meant to the Birmingham that we enjoy today.
There were, there were always people anywhere in the country who wanted to either be heard or make a connection to their community. And those people stepped forward and decided to, uh, try broadcasting.
Sure, a lot of people, uh, remembered there who I've never heard of. So the, the thought that I can come back and learn something about them and, and remember people that I did hear of and hear them again, I, I think that was, uh, the cool thing. And then how technology allows him to present so much information in such a small space. I think that was the real amazing part.